Good evening, folks, and welcome to the January 26th meeting of Gaston County Board of Commissioners. My name is Tom Keegan. I serve as chairman of the board as well as commissioner from Gastonia Township. I'd like to thank all our viewers and thank Time Warner Cable and AT&amp;T for making this possible for our citizens. For our television audience, I would like to begin by presenting our commissioners, beginning on my far right.
Alan Fraley, Chair of Township.
Good evening, Chad Brown, Riverbend Township.
Good evening, Nicky Price, South Point Township.
Good evening, Jason Williams, Gastonia Township.
Tracy Philbeck, Dallas Township.
And good evening to Joe Carpenter, Crowder's Mountain Township.
And I'd also like to present our county clerk Donna Buff, our manager Earl Mathers, and attorney Charles Moore. At this time, if you would all stand and join us in our invocational prayer led by the Reverend Dicky Spargo.
Thank you. Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this community that you've placed us in. We thank you for the season that we have in our county. We believe 2016, Lord, is going to be an awesome year, and we thank you for our commissioners, for our leaders in our community. And we ask, Lord, that you would give us wisdom, that you would give us direction, and we pray, Lord, for your blessing, particularly upon those in our community this evening who are struggling, who are hurting, who are losing hope. And we just ask, Lord, for your hand to be with them and your blessing and your peace to be with them and in our community today. And we pray this in Christ's name. Amen.
Commissioner Brown will lead us in the pledge.
Should join me, please. Our pledge alleges to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend Spargo. The board will take citizen comment on the following issues: one, a zoning text amendment, one zoning map change, and one municipal appointment for the King's Mountain Zoning and Planning Board ETJ. Commissioner Keegan. I think we have a proclamation to do first. Yes, we do, and it's mine, too, isn't it? Yes, sir. Okay. It wasn't on the orange sheet. My bad. Everybody associated with Mary Jo's, if you would please come to the podium. That may be everybody in here. Well, not everybody that purchased. Okay. Well, Alan Kloniger, one of the sons of Mary Jo and along with his brother Thomas, who is the CEO, I believe, and CFO?
All them letters.
Okay. Well, thank you, Alan, for coming to accept this. Whereas on January 16th, 2016, Mary Jo's Cloth Store Incorporated celebrated 65 years of business in Gaston County, and its inspirational founder, Margaret Colleen Mary Jo Kloniger, celebrated her 84th birthday. And whereas the multimillion-dollar fabric company, whose reach extends from Gastonia to China, got its start in 1951 when a determined 19-year-old Mary Jo talked her father into cosigning a $500 bank loan for her startup business inventory. And whereas Mary Jo's entrepreneurial spirit and vision conquered the odds then and remains steadfast now in an industry that is still male-dominated. And whereas, with its humble beginnings in the back of her father's grocery store in Dallas, North Carolina, Mary Jo's Cloth Store grew and expanded into larger facilities over the years, survived a fire in 1981. And whereas the store's reputation continued to grow and spread, and in 1986, Mary Jo's Cloth Store relocated to the Gaston Mall, where it remains today as a beloved and trusted source for craft and design customers. And whereas her son Thomas Kloniger, CEO/ CFO, her nephew Josh Kloniger, assistant manager, currently manage the operations of the 55-employee company and carry on Mary Jo's legacy of earning customer loyalty through quality products, valuable, and knowledgeable service. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners commends Mary Jo's Cloth Store, Inc. on its 65th anniversary and further expresses its gratitude to Mary Jo Kloniger for her dedication and vision and for sharing her talents and passion for craft and design with the citizens of Gaston County and beyond. And this will be adopted in our consent agenda later this evening. And I'll present this to Alan on behalf of his mother and brother and all the employees of Mary Jo's.
Thank you.
And also my sister Paula Kloniger-Houser. It's hard to stand here. A lot of you know about Mary Jo. Mary Jo's has Alzheimer's. I'm her brother. Then sometimes I'm not known by her. And this is a woman that doesn't have a high school education. She dropped out of school. So did Polly, her husband. And they built a great business in this county. So I've struggled with what Mary Jo would want me to say on her behalf tonight. It hurts. I can't go ask her. Alzheimer's is a terrible, terrible thing. But if I could say what she would say to you is what she beat into me, and I mean literally beat into me, is the golden rule. We should all remember that in our dealings every day. Do unto others as you'd have them do unto you. She would want you to try to live by that rule because that's what she did in building that store. She always tried to treat everybody the way she wanted to be treated. Sometimes she didn't treat her son necessarily that way. But we don't all succeed. We fail. But she would want all of us to remember that because she has a strong belief in God. And she hasn't worked in the store in three years. And Thomas and the staff have done a great job keeping it going. She worked six days a week. And to this day, when I go visit her, oftentimes she says, "When am I going back to work?" That's strong work ethic. She didn't expect nobody to work if she wasn't in there working, too. Again, to the commissioners, thank you for recognizing my mother, for her strong work in this county. Her and my dad and my family, we love this county. And I do wish she was here. She would have a big smile right now. My dad's looking down on this, and he's sitting those chairs up there where y'all sat for 16 years, so he knows what you go through, but he would be smiling right now because, as Commissioner Keegan said, the cloth business is a hard, hard business now. But we're still here. We plan on still being here. Thomas is doing a good job. I just want to say thank you on behalf of my whole family, but more particularly on behalf of my mom because she's smiling. She's a covenant. And I hope none of you have to have a parent or yourself go through Alzheimer's because it is the worst of the worst. Don't feel sorry for Mary Jo. She wouldn't dare want you to feel sorry for her. Ain't no Kloniger want you to feel sorry for, but we got to work on that. But do remember what she told me and enforced on me. Let's all try to do unto others as we should, how we want to be treated. And what better county would we have? Better state and better country. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Philbeck, for that reminder. Okay. Again, the county commission will take comment on the following issues: one zoning text amendment, one zoning map change, one municipal appointment. Before we go into public hearing, let me outline the rules for the procedure for the hearings. Citizens wishing to make comment will be recognized by the chair and then requested to step to the microphone with their comments. Citizens will state their name and address for our record. Comments will be limited to three minutes. Questions shall be directed to the chair for response. The chair shall rule on all points of order during the hearings. Do I have a motion to go into public hearing? Who made the motion? Mr. Price, seconded by Mr. Philbeck. All those in favor? Thank you. Item one, the Unified Development Ordinance, or otherwise known as the UDO. The commission will take comment on a zoning text amendment, ZTA 16-01. The applicant is Gaston County Planning Board to consider proposed text amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 9, such sections as noted in the text. And we will now turn it over to Mr. Williams.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Board of Commission and Planning Board. Excuse my voice. I'm nursing a little cold. But I will try to be brief. A request from a citizen was brought to the planning department staff to consider modifying the UDO, or Unified Development Ordinance. Planning staff and county management met with the citizen to discuss the purpose and need for the changes. As a result of the meetings, all involved came up with what we think is a reasonable solution through some minor adjustments to the UDO that will preserve the intent and harmony of the county residential subdivision regulations. From the meeting, it was determined that the planning board should act as the applicant since this matter became a collaborative effort. While there are several sections proposed for amending, most are minor in nature. I would like to highlight a few for you that are also within your agenda packet. Section 1311 for major subdivisions. In summary, the change would require certain development standards to apply only when residential subdivision developments are within 500 feet of public or public municipal water and sewer utilities, i.e. curb and gutter, sidewalks, green strips, crosswalks, street trees, et cetera. These standards are principally and generally required within the Urban Standards Overlay District or the USO. And, Mr. Chairman, just to give you a definition of the USO, to give you some context of when the UDO was developed and drafted, back in 2006. Areas of the county, USO, it says, are areas of the county which are located outside the corporate limits and/or municipal extraterritorial jurisdiction, but where the provision of public and water and sewer services can reasonably be expected to occur over the next 10 to 15 years have been designated as the Urban Standards Overlay District. Accordingly, standards for development more akin to those that traditionally are found in urban areas as opposed to rural areas are called for. Standards addressed but not limited to building design, off-street parking, road, lot, and subdivision standards. These developments, ones that are within 500 feet, will be required to connect to both utilities. In section 13.19.1, we are proposing to reduce the requirement to connect to public water and sewer if the proposed residential subdivision is within 500 feet as opposed to a half mile or one mile as it is currently. Again, proposed major subdivisions, those are six or more lots within 500 feet, will be required to provide urban standards such as sidewalks, curb and gutter, et cetera. If the development isn't within 500 feet of the 500-feet requirement, the urban development standards mentioned previously wouldn't apply. The developer would be permitted to develop a more rural-style development, which owns separate tanks and wells, and the lots are much, much larger. A rural-type residential development would be required to provide engineered, designed ditches along the streets in lieu of curb and gutter. Also, we are proposing to delete section 13.2, the cul-de-sac requirement. This section limits the length of the street in a residential subdivision to 600 feet or 1,000 feet in length with the goal to provide connectivity and more street connections. Since many county or rural areas are without water and sewer, and the lots and/or parcels come in many shapes and sizes, this requirement can be difficult to achieve. This standard relates more to urban-style development where connectivity with streets may be more prevalent because of smaller lot sizes, especially where public water and sewer are available to the development. The other sections proposed for changes are also minor and more so to help improve the section and provide clarity. It is staff opinion that the proposed changes or adjustments are in keeping with the original premise behind the UDO and the residential subdivisions within the USO, as I mentioned earlier about the provision of water and sewer within 10 to 15 years, as well as the availability of water and sewer. The planning board met on December 10th, 2015, and reviewed the proposed amendments and voted unanimously to forward the proposed changes to the public hearing format with the Board of Commission with one suggested change, which is to show the utilities in Figure 11.4-1 in the street right away instead of on private property as an easement. So they didn't want that shown on private property. Proposed changes were sent to the municipalities which adopted the UDO, and staff received no comments back in terms of the proposal. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Is there any citizen that would like to comment at this time? Yes, sir. If you would come up and tell us your name and address, please.
Johnny Denton, 2016, Cherokee Court, Gastonia. I'm the cause of the problems, I think. But first of all, I want to thank staff for their help with this, and in particular, Commissioner Philbeck. We submitted a subdivision. I'm a civil engineer in Gaston County. We submitted a subdivision back in 2009, which was the first subdivision submitted under this ordinance. And we had some issues with NCDOT, some of the other problems that came up during the review process. And at that time, a particular subdivision lost its funding, and we pulled that from consideration. And back in the summer of this year, we submitted the second subdivision under the UDO. And I think part of the problem with development in Gaston County is slowed to a crawl because of this ordinance. In one sense, some of the regulations were pretty strict for subdivisions with water and sewer. And that's, in the rural areas of Gaston County, that's all we have currently. I think we all wish we had county-wide water in particular and sewer, but that just hasn't happened fast enough. We feel like these adjustments, we've asked for. John Leinberger and I have collaborated with staff to come up with some of these solutions that... I know in particular, I've got two subdivisions in the pipeline that will be submitted under these revisions, and I think we'll have two good subdivisions going. But I appreciate y'all's considering these changes. And again, I want to thank staff for their assistance with this.
Thank you, sir. Any planning board member have questions? How many planning board members do we have? Could you raise your hand, please? One, two, three, four, five, six. We've got six? Seven. Oh, okay. Thank you. I'm sorry. Any commissioners have comments or questions? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank Mr. Leinberger and Mr. Denton. When I first got elected in '09, that's how long this goes back, I was asked by developers, "Hey, we've got to change some areas in this UDO." Since the UDO was implemented, no development throughout the county. It stopped it. I want to thank the staff. I want to thank Earl, David, Ron, and I hope I'm not missing anyone else. But it's a big deal to make these changes. I don't know if any of you remember the UDO when it came out, but it was a big deal just to get it here. What this is going to do is finally open up areas of development which will help spur our economy. And it hasn't happened since the day the UDO went into effect. So I want to thank staff. I want to thank Mr. Leinberger, Mr. Denton. I probably got a call from Mr. Leinberger at least once a month. And it's taken a lot of time and a lot of work, but this is a good thing for Gaston County. It's a good thing for development. It's a good thing for our economy. And I just, it's because some citizens said, "Hey, we need some help." And they came in and said, "This is how we can fix it." And our staff worked with them, and I just think it's... When people say government doesn't work, I think that's a good model of just the opposite, that government did work in a good way to help, even though it created the problem, to rewrite that wrong. So I just wanted to say that and personally thank the staff again and Mr. Denton and Mr. Leinberger. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Philbeck. Any other comments? I would like to take just a point of personal privilege since you commented on the staff and the planning board doing such good work. He's no longer with us, but Mr. Eli Alfred spent many, many years along with the people that served on the planning board and in our planning department at that time. And some of you are still with us. We thank you for that. And I just wanted to mention Eli since Mr. Philbeck brought up thanking those folks. Second item, zoning map change. The commission will take comment on a zoning map change, Z15-10 Flat Creek LLC. Property parcel, or property parcels, parcels are listed here in the text, located at 1322 South Point Road in Belmont, zoned R1, single-family limited zoning districts, W/US overlay, and CU-C-2, conditional use highway commercial zoning districts, W/CH portion and US overlay to the C3 general commercial zoning district. Does everybody understand that? I'll ask Mrs. Sarah Penley, planning GIS specialist, for comments, and Mrs. Penley, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thanks for the background. And I'm here to be brief and simply highlight some points of the application for your consideration.
Could you get a little closer?
Does this help? Sorry. I apologize. For your consideration tonight is rezoning application 15-10, and the applicant is Flat Creek LLC. Mr. Tripp McLean, represented tonight by Mr. Doug Authers. The property owners are Marty and Deana Murphy, all of whom are present this evening. Should the board have any questions for them? This is a request for a general rezoning of property parcel 221-532, 5.86 acres from CU/C-2, conditional use highway commercial zoning district with CH and US overlays to the C-3, which is general commercial zoning district with CH and US overlays, and a portion of parcel 221-533, which is going to be 4.42 acres of the 8.10 acres total from R-1, single-family limited zoning district with US overlay to the C3 general commercial zoning district with US overlay. This is a total of 10.28 acres, coming out of the total 13.96 acres being rezoned to the C-3 general zoning district. The property is currently vacant and undeveloped. Prior to 2012, it was the site of Ken's Manufactured Home Park. And in October 2012, it was rezoned to the current CU/C-2, conditional use highway commercial zoning district to allow for a lawn and garden center. And if you can refer to the VZ. Okay. This first map is an overview of the area in question and the subject or the site of the property. It's located at the intersection of South New Hope Road, or correction, South Point Road and Gaither Road. The site in question is highlighted in blue in this hatched area. And to demonstrate that the portion of the second parcel that's coming out, we've indicated the total parcel in green with only this portion here being that 4.86 or 4.42 acres to be split out for the rezoning of that parcel. The general zoning in the area is mostly R1 residential with the CH overlay and the US overlay. And it should be noted that this property or the site also adjoins the City of Belmont's ETJ or Extraterritorial Jurisdiction. The second view that I have tonight for you shows a closer view of the site. This first parcel in question shows you where it was rezoned, or not rezoned, but conditional use/C2 zoning district, and then the portion to be considered tonight along with it. So this entire area here is to be changed to the, or considered for the C3 zoning, if approved. And our last item to show you tonight is an aerial photo of the property. You can see that it's vacant. This represents it for the most part as it is today. We've got a mini-storage warehouse just to the north of the property that's located in the zoning district for the City of Belmont with residential across the street on both sides. And we've also got a church, I believe, just located down the street into the southwest portion of the property. The property is located in the southeast small area of the county. With consideration of the comprehensive plan goals and objectives, it is the opinion of staff, the proposed map amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan. of staff, the proposed map amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The City of Belmont was notified, but no comments or concerns were reported back. Staff has received a few phone calls, but most have been for general information only. Mr. Chair, this concludes staff's report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Penley. At this time, will take any citizen recognition? Good evening, Mr. Arthur.
Good evening. My name is Doug Arthurs, 420 East Long Avenue. I represent Flat Creek Properties, Mr. Tripp McLean, who's proposing to develop this property. I would like to point out that, as Sarah stated, this property, this request is consistent with the comprehensive plan. A portion of it, one of the parcels, is unfor, a lawn and garden supply business that has never been opened and operated. Head map, try to put that back here if I can. There's a storage facility to the north of the facility, but to have a storage facility, it needs to be C3. So that property, which is the storage facility, and this piece property, and that storage facility to the north is essentially what my client proposes to do with the property to the south of the storage right here, is already commercially zoned. It's only about 4.42 acres and half, which is half of a adjoining lot that's going to be upgraded to commercial. It was formerly a mobile home park, and we believe that the use that my client's proposing, which is not the only use that can go in there, but he has a proposed use, I can show that to you if anyone's interested in seeing it. It is a nice proposed storage facility, which we believe will be a low-traffic impact on South Point Road. And again, the town of Belmont hasn't submitted any comments to this proposal. Mr. McLean's here to answer any questions, so is the property owner. If you have any questions, may I be happy to try to answer them.
All right. Any other citizens wishing to make comments? Planning board members, questions? Any commissioners, a question?
This is the, about the fourth time we've had a hearing on this property, and I hope it's going to be settled this time, Tripp.
All right. At this time, we'll excuse the planning board to the First Apairance Courtroom, number 2029, for deliberation, and we'll wait on your decisions. Any of the members that were here regarding the two different issues, you're more than welcome to go on in there with them.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Point of order. I would like to, if possible, make a motion that we move this presentation, in the interest of time, down to item-
We still have one more planning issue.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, go ahead while you're on the subject.
Yeah, if we can, after we do that, the public hearing. I'm sorry?
You want to move the audit presentation behind citizen recognition?
No, I meant behind, because I think most people are here, just want to speak about their item and hear what happens. Maybe after item 12.
Item 12.
Yeah, but we can vote on it after we get out of the public hearing.
Okay. If you would remind us. Thank you. The county commission will take citizen comment concerning applications submitted at or before the public hearing for one appointment to the Kings Mountain Planning and Zoning Board, representing extratorial jurisdiction. The Kings Mountain City Council has recommended Max Clark Jr. Are there any additional applications to be received at this time? Does anybody know of any in the room? Any citizen comment? Questions from the commissioners? Yes, sir.
I will vote against ETJ. I do, every time, I like to tell the public why I do that. I believe ETJs are unconstitutional, and they're constitutional, but I don't think they're fair. Basically, it is a city that has a jurisdiction of an area, but the people in that area do not get a right to vote on issues that affect them. So when ETJ appointments come up, I vote against them all. So, thank you.
All right. Any other comments from the board? I'll accept a motion to appoint Mr. Clark.
Second.
Brown made the motion, and Fraley II. Any discussion, all those in favor? Thank you. It's six to one, all those opposed. This concludes the public hearing for tonight. The board would like to thank each of you for your input. Do I hear a motion to go out of closed hearing? Mr. Brown made the motion. Mr. Price made the second. Any discussion, all those in favor? Thank you.
Commissioner Kegger?
Yes.
Point of privilege, please, if you don't mind. We have a lot of people out here in the audience who are elected as well, and so if you wouldn't mind, maybe ask them to stand just so we can recognize them, or form them.
We'll do that right as we get to citizen recognition, right in a minute. So, Mr. Williams, you wanted to move item 4A to, right after item 12?
Yes, sir, that's correct, to the last thing.
And 11, 12. Could we, would you entertain a change of that, and we do it right before item 11, in case the non-consent agenda items get lengthy?
Well, I want to do it after we vote on the items. I think that's the reason most people are here, so that way, if they're not interested in hearing the audit presentation, they can feel free to go.
Okay. Well, do I have a motion to approve the agenda with the, with the change, Mr. Williams? Mr. Price?
You're asking for agenda revision?
Well, I didn't ask yet, but Mr. Williams volunteered it.
I would propose that we combine, under the non-consent items, combine B, C, D, E, F, and G into one resolution, and vote on them all at one time.
Okay, that's just what I was getting ready to do, the agenda revision. So, tell me that again.
Under the non-consent items, B, C, D, E, F, and G, combine them into one item and vote on them all at one time.
Okay.
I'll second that if you need a second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Price, seconded by Mr. Fraley. Any discussion? All those okay with that, raise your hand. All right? So, A will be separate from the rest of the non-consent. Are there any other revisions?
We're on agenda revisions.
Right.
I think that'll do.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve?
So move.
Mr. Philbeck made the motion, Mr. Brown the second. Any discussion, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. We'll make, take approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of November 10 of 15, the closed session of 11:10 of 15, special teleconference meeting of 11:23, regular meeting of 12:08, and the organizational meeting of 12:08. Is there a motion to approve?
Hit.
Mr. Philbeck made the motion, Mr. Brown the second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Now, we will have citizen recognition, and per Mr. Brown's request, would any elected officials that would care to stand and recognize yourself and tell us where you're from, we will do that at this time. Mayor, how are you? Go ahead and start. Yes, sir. Young lady in the back. Yes. Yes, sir. Thank you, and the sheriff raised his hand back there. I think he got hidden.
We've got three more from Dallas. If y'all could stand up, again, Allen, go ahead and introduce yourself.
Thank you. They're shy, huh?
We're shy in Dallas.
Commissioner Kegger, I think we have Jamie, I don't know if you said, if you had to stand up, Commissioner Ranlo and Dicky Spargo, Mayor of Bethlehem.
Well, I asked if they wanted to stand up. I think you might have been pushing some that didn't want to do it. Okay, we will continue with citizen recognition right now. Speakers have five minutes to speak on your choice. However, I just want to predicate this session, because there is, if everybody on these pages talk five minutes, we're going to be here quite a while. But I do want to let you know, unless somebody has a change of opinion on the board, this may make somebody not want to come up or need to come up. The items that the commissioners have already announced that they were approving, they were published in the paper, I checked with each commissioner, they are going to stay fast with those. So if you were on that list that they are going to recommend, I know, I know my fellow commissioners will vote in a majority to approve these things. So if that helps expedite the evening, you're more than welcome to speak, but that said, when I call your name, if you do not feel you need to speak again, since the money's going to be allocated as it was published, you can just decline when I call your name. Mr. Gallagher, followed by Charles Graham, and then Dr. Ansel Overbee, if you want to form, start forming a little line.
Chairman Kegger, county commissioners, thank you for this opportunity. Gentlemen, I know you have the enviable task of selecting the projects and accepting and rejecting which ones are good and bad with, you know, that have been presented to you. I want to thank you for your time and your service to our county, but I just want to reiterate that this money was meant to be spent. I think it is a brilliant idea on your part to designate a small portion of the hospital funds to each county commissioner in order to help different areas of our county, to fund projects that need doing and can and will pay back dividends in the future. There's one that you guys have put in the paper and said that you're going to be funding, which is the farmer's market. That's going to have a direct impact on the farmer's market already, and we should be able to have that up and running this spring. And I just want to say thank you for that. The money was meant to be spent. The last time I spoke before this esteemed body, I was requesting Commissioner Kegger, now Chairman Kegger, to reconsider his plan on returning the funds back to the county. I would still like for him to reconsider. This money was meant to be spent. I also would like you to consider, gentlemen, $50,000 to go to the S.H.I.E.L.D. museum. I know the city does not do anything for students, but the $50,000 would allow 37,000 students to go on a class trip to the S.H.I.E.L.D. museum one time, free of charge. And I think that's just reasonable, and, you know, I hope you agree with me. The other thing is, I'd like to say is, you also put down that you want to fund the Smyer Water Project. That's a really excellent idea, because right now, the people are paying, you know, it's a poor area, and once Gaston goes in and we're able to redo their water for them, their bills now that they're paying like $70 a month, and the people don't make that much there, but if we can lower that cost down by half, that would help out those residents there, and I just want to say thank you very much for that. The other thing is, you know, this money was meant to be spent. If you were, if I was to choose a project, the Irwin Center project for the Splash Park for disadvantaged children that live in that area, that's an excellent idea, thank you for that. The children that live there do not have an easy access to get down to Leinberger's Splash Park. It's not that close by for them. This also will show the community, the Irwin Center community, that we care for their families and their children. And, you know, we want to invest in them and in their lives, and that's going to pay dividends in the future. This money was meant to be spent. In closing, I just want to say thank you, county commissioners, for this opportunity. I can tell you and the rest of our city council, we look forward to working closely with you on these projects that you selected, and I know the hard task in choosing these projects, however, I know you will do what is right, and I just want to say thank you, that this money was meant to be spent. Take care.
Thank you. Mr. Graham?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Charles Graham, the town administrator for the town of Ranlo. I will be brief, rather than the comments I read you were going to make, commissioners, I just wanted to, on behalf of the citizens of Ranlo, thank you for considering investing in things that will directly benefit the quality life of our citizens. And in particular, the application we submitted for the township investment grants have to do with our parks that are heavily utilized by our citizens anytime the weather is more amenable to outside activities than this past weekend. But there are people in these facilities almost every day, of all ages, and so often citizens look at government and say, where are they spending all of our money? I think this investment will be visible to all citizens, be beneficial to all citizens, and so we appreciate that. And also, I echo also not only the Ranlo application, but the one for the City of Gaston, for the Smyer neighborhood. I will have to admit that Ranlo is supplying water to that area through the water system that was originally put in by the Smyer Manufacturing Company. So it is old, in need of improvement, and unfortunately, to operate at its expenses, so the town of Ranlo does charge those outside our city limits at higher rates. Since it's the City of Gaston, yeah, it will be an excellent opportunity for those citizens to have an improved water system and better water rates. So, again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Dr. Overbee, followed by David Humphries, Dorothy Guth III, and Robert Kella.
My name is Ansel Overbee. I live at 1401 Rivermont Drive, Gaston, and I'm here to say thank you, and now that I've heard that it's going to be approved, it's a great big thank you. Crisis Pregnancy Center is the only center in the nation that collaborates with the Health Department and has an on-site presence. We're the only center east of the Mississippi that has five settings in the same county, and where the need is, we go there, and I'm especially thankful to Commissioner Fraley for an opportunity to come to the Cherryville area and make a difference there. And as all of you know, anywhere we go, we do it debt-free, you will not be paying any kind of rent. We secured a location for a dollar per year endlessly, and the opportunity of doing referrals with the Health Department and the Fire Department and schools, and the Women's Shelter and Room at the Inn, and networking with churches and ministerial associations and the school personnel. Over and over again, Crisis Pregnancy Center is there making a difference to almost 3,000 clients per year, and last year, we gave out 25,000 individual supplies to our clients, and we had 30,000 contacts with individuals in this county. So as I looked over those 29 entities that will be receiving funds, all of us are there to make a difference, and we appreciate the opportunity to do that. Thank you again.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Humphries?
Good evening, my name is David Humphries. I live at 1611 Belmar Drive in Gaston. I have the honor of serving the citizens of Gaston as a member of the city council from Ward 6. I'd like to thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the board of commissioners for this opportunity. My purpose here this evening was to rally support for the grant requests from the City of Gaston. We appreciate your deliberations and your time. There was a lot of items included there because of the basic amount of money that Gaston was going to get. We know there was a lot of discussion- We know there was a lot of discussion. As Councilman Gallagher said, one of the most immediate benefits is the farmer's market. And when it opens this year, there's going to be a lot more space for a lot more vendors, a lot more fresh food, which I think we all enjoy. So I definitely want to thank you for that. Also, with the S.H.I.E.L.D. museum, Councilman Gallagher was right. The school students, when I was growing up, we got to go there, I don't know how many years in a row, just to go visit the museum. It needs to happen, again, it needs to start happening regular. The museum doesn't ask directly for funds to allow the children to come and visit, but I think the county and the city need to work together and make sure that it happens. There's no more joy than seeing a child look up at a polar bear that has never seen a picture of a polar bear, and there is a life-size replica. The North Carolina section of the museum, every time I go in there, I learn more and more, and I'm from here forever. But please consider that to add some additional funds for the S.H.I.E.L.D. museum for the I know you were deliberate and diligent in your consideration for the grant request. Everybody appreciates that these funds are a one-time opportunity. As a community, we need to make the best use of it possible at this time. Using these funds for normally budgeted items, I don't believe is a viable option. There's a higher purpose intended, and thank you again for your time and your consideration of all the requests. Have a nice evening.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Guthrie, welcome.
Good evening, Chairman Keger and Board of Commissioners. I am Doc Guthrie. I reside at 526 Shadowview Drive, Gastonia, North Carolina, and I brought some of our future with me this evening. I would like for the future of Gaston County to stand, young people stand. Last summer, let's give them a round of applause. Last summer, 2015, Dr. Benjamin Hinton and the Tabernacle Baptist Church family saw a need to offer some type of literacy-enriched program to our children, knowing that they would be out of school from eight to 10 weeks. And many of the children out of school during that time would not have access to many literacy-based resources which are so important to our children because it does show, research shows that when children are not exposed constantly, they lose some of those skills. So we at Tabernacle decided to offer Camp Tabernacle every Wednesday, every Wednesday morning from eight to four, and we partnered with Gaston County Schools. And we also invited some of our stakeholders in the community to come see what we were doing at Tabernacle to continue to raise children that would have those skills needed in order to be successful at the beginning of the new school year. So we did have volunteers, all volunteers, highly qualified educators to volunteer to participate in this program. We offered language arts, reading, science, social studies, and we all know how important STEM is today, and we had science teachers there, math and science teachers, to get those children excited, to cause them to become engaged in those literacy-enriched activities. Commissioner Williams came one Wednesday, and we gave him a tour of what we were doing. We took him around and showed him. He saw how engaged the children were involved. Councilman Gallagher came one Wednesday, and we took him to see what we were doing at Tabernacle. We had, and we were very fortunate, to have a TBC Learning Center, which consisted of books, slow, slow, slow computers, and we were not able to accommodate many of the e- resources that are so important now for children in our school districts. We collaborated with Gaston County Schools. We provided some ebooks for our children. Yes, we did buy an iPad, and we used what we had because we wanted our children and we wanted the parents to know that it's important for us to raise our children. And the United Negro College motto is, a mind is a terrible thing to waste, and we did not feel like we wanted to waste not one minute of any child's mind. And Commissioner Keger, I want to thank you for showing your presence at the MLK celebrations last Monday. And as you know, Dr. King strongly believed in educating our children, and he quoted, "The function of education is to teach one to think intensively and to think critically, intelligence plus character." That is the goal of true education, and that's what we were trying to do in our literacy-enriched program called Camp Tabernacle. Well, with 90 children enrolled, we decided that we would offer Project Invest, which is a tutorial program for the school year, throughout the school year. And we use the acronym, and Invest stands for Inquiring, Negotiating, Valuing, Encouraging/ Educating, Stimulating, and Teaching Our Youth. We want that program to continue. And yes, we presented an application to you, Project Invest. We strongly believe that we need to invest in our children. We don't want Gaston County Schools to have all of the responsibility. It's up to us as community leaders and stakeholders in this community, in the Gaston community, to raise our children so that we look at economic empowerment, sure, if our children can read, then they're going to feel comfortable. And when we have businesses looking at Gaston County, we know that our children are literate enough to qualify for some of the resources that will be offered, economic envelopment, education, and also health-related. Because if they feel good about themselves, when they know they are capable and they can stand against any other student, we can truly say in Gaston that we are taking care of our children. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
As Mr. Kellogg approaches the podium, would Kamel Sharp, Shay Adams, Mr. Beam, and Ben Blackburn sort of form a line? Be ready. Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Robert Kellogg, and I reside at 1652 Lowell Bethesda Road here in Gastonia. As a recently elected city councilman for the city of Gastonia, I want to thank you all for the opportunity for these grants, which will greatly affect our townships. I want to thank Commissioner Williams, who spent some time with me to discuss the matter and actually kind of school me on what this was all about when I was elected city council. So thank you for that very much. I'm not going to say a whole lot because I believe our other two city councilmen have really touched on a lot of what I wanted to say, but I do want to thank you, and just two of the projects in general that I really want to point out that I think are really special. The first one is the Splash Park for Irwin, Irwin Park. Many of these folks in that community don't have the money to go to a theme park, go to Carowinds, or to go someplace that many of us would not think twice about. I think this is a wonderful idea. I thank you all for agreeing to look at that proposal and hopefully passing that as well. And the other idea we also touched on was the farmer's market. It is a great opportunity to put that on the map even larger than what it is, for people to recognize that we have a growing and diverse farmer's market. To utilize that space and make it grow, I believe one-third more vendors is what it's proposing. That's just a great idea. Again, I want to thank you all for listening to us, for looking at these proposals, and I look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sharp.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Kamal Sharp, and I live at 801 Freedom Mill Road. I am a junior at Hunter Huss High School. I proudly serve as a member of the marching band, athletic trainer, and I'm a track sprinter. All three of my duties utilizes the track and football practice fields. Therefore, I would like to speak on the renovations at Hunter Huss. These renovations are necessary for the safety of people like myself and student athletes, coaches, trainers, and faculty that use these facilities. Being an athletic trainer for the football team, almost every day I'll have to pick up trash with other trainers for about 20, 30 minutes. Also, these materials are very hazardous to the football players and other sports, extracurricular activities that use them. Being a track sprinter, this will help the track team tremendously. We could use a flat surface without cracks less than a quarter, actual lines to actually run in, and the right equipment, so we actually have stuff to practice at school. I would like to inform you that these fields aren't used just for their particular sport. The practice football field has doubled for the marching band field, as well as Pop Warner Football Leagues. Most other sports that use this track are wrestling, the band, cheerleaders. Seeing litter on the field makes me feel like no one has respect for my school and would rather litter than be concerned about the safety of student athletes. Most of the time, when I'm walking in the hallway going to class, I always hear comments such as, "Why is Huss so raggedy?", and also, "Nobody cares about this school because they won't fix it." This irritates me very, very much, because unlike some people at my school, I actually care about it. I would love for my teammates on track to receive the facilities that they deserve for the hard work they put in and getting first place at regionals, county, and state meets. This will also bring school spirit back. In conclusion, I hope that you will accept this proposition and help our sport facilities become safer for all.
Well done, Mr. Sharp. Thank you. Ms. Adams.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Shay Adams. I reside at 801 Freedom Mill Road, Gastonia, North Carolina, 28052. Well, if you did not already know, I have guessed, Kamal Sharp happens to be my son. I am very proud to be called his mom. Things you don't know about Kamal, yes, he is a marching band member, he is a track sprinter, he also is, what else you do? He's an athletic trainer. My job as his mom is to support him in anything that he does. So along with him being the marching band almost drum major, I'm the band president booster. Along with him being on the track, I'm the athletic booster. Along with him being a student at Hunter Huss, I serve as a parent advisory committee for superintendent, as well as the school. I'm very, very much in love with Huss. One, because I graduated from there. Two, because I have a future graduate of there. Hunter Huss is a beautiful school, inside and out. It has raised people like myself. To be able to come to speak to you all is also raising a future physical therapist/musician who carries a 3.7 GPA at Huss. I ask for these athletics to be, to be safe, to be on an equal playing field. My job as a mom is to make sure that my son is safe. I've heard Sheriff Kloniger said, "Treat others as if you would want to be treated." Would you want your child to be on a safe, unsafe field? Would you send your children to Hunter Huss, knowing that they have to be a sports trainer, a track star, a cheerleader, a wrestler, a band member that's on fields and tracks that aren't safe? You would be doing the same thing that I'm here doing, advocating for a school that I love, a school that my son attends, a school that needs an equal playing field. So I just ask, that you turn your heart and give Hunter Huss the things that they're needing. As a businessperson, if we are granted these things, we can make revenue at the school. We can now host track meets. We want to carry our own, and we want to make sure that our kids are safe. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Mr. Beam, good evening.
Good evening. I'm Cherryville Mayor, H.L. Beam. I reside at 404 Spring Street in Cherryville. I want to thank you for, Chairman Keger, for allowing me to speak tonight, and for all the commissioners here for allowing me to have this opportunity. And I want to take this opportunity to especially thank Commissioner Allen Fraley for submitting the concept of distributing these county funds to all municipalities within Gaston County's domain. These funds will be a tremendous shot in the arm, so to speak, for the city of Cherryville. I know how these funds will impact the other cities and municipalities that all of you here represent as well. As you all know, Cherryville in the past has gone through some dark periods. With the two embezzlements within our city staff, our city came within weeks of a total financial collapse. But one thing about Cherryville that I've learned is that we are residual and don't give up easily. In the past few years, we have made significant strides in restoring the citizens' faith in our city and have had a tremendous turnaround in our financial situation. This is evidenced by special recognition given to us by the State of North Carolina for Cherryville's financial improvements and accomplishments. Now, one project that will be impacted by these proposed funds is our water plant upgrades of two filters and a pump. We plan to use these funds to rebuild the two filters that have never been rebuilt since the water plant was built in 1963. That's over 52 years ago. All three of our pumps have outlived their life expectancies. We are presented with this problem each year at budget time, and each year we've had to use funds requested for this project elsewhere. But with funds, with funds from this board, we can now bring this project to fruition. This is just one project that these funds will bring much-needed financial aid to the city of Cherryville. Our city manager, Ben Blackburn, is here also and would like to speak for a moment. Thank you again for this opportunity, and I know I am just one person that's represented one city within our county, but I want to thank this board and all of its members for their tireless work and sacrifices you make on behalf of our county, and especially the wise decisions that are made to aid and assist all cities and municipalities within our great county. And now I will give you city manager, Ben Blackburn. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, Mr. Blackburn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, county commissioners, Ben Blackburn, city manager with the city of Cherryville. I'll be very brief. I understand how each one of you wants to get home tonight, but I'm encouraged by one person that spoke tonight, and it was this young man from Hunter Huss. Our future is very bright here in Gaston County because of young men and women such as he that are being recognized and willing to speak out here in the community for what they feel is right and what needs to be done. That being said, I want to thank each and every one of you for this township grant project and programs for the benefit, not only for Cherryville, but for Gaston County and its citizens. Everyone here tonight benefits. Those that you represent benefit. Thank you on behalf of the city of Cherryville. Thank you on behalf of the citizens of Gaston County for your foresight, what you do for not only Cherryville, but Gaston County, because what's good for Gaston County... not only Cherryville but Gaston County, because what's good for Gaston County is good for Cherryville. What's good for Cherryville is good for Gaston County. Thank you again, and I appreciate each and every one of you. Happy New Year.
Thank you, sir. Mary Smith, followed by Pamela Myers and Chris Howell. Good evening, Ms. Smith.
Good evening. My name is Mary Nicole Smith, 316 Daisy Court. Now, I'm going to be really brief. I don't have any connection at Hunter Huss. My connection are with Forest View and South Point. However, my heart is with the schools, all of the schools, all of the kids, because that's our future. So, I can't forget any of them. My concern is doing the right thing. That's the way I live my life. Anybody that knows me, know. I live my life doing the right thing. I don't care who it is, what color y'all. I'm gonna do the right thing. Because when I look in the mirror in the morning brush my teeth, who you see looking back at you? And you got to be happy with yourself. Now, there's money to be allotted, and it saddens me to hear about all of the needs at Hunter Huss. I shudder to think about my child going to school with a school that's falling apart, a school that has that many needs, when the other schools that I know are getting their fair share. So, again, I'm concerned with just doing the right thing. So, I want to focus on the need of Hunter Huss and the kids at Hunter Huss, because frankly, they deserve better. If it was my child at Hunter Huss, and they're not, because I don't have any, I don't even have any grandkids at Hunter Huss, mine are at Forest View, but the other people's kids are important to me, too. So, I feel like they deserve better. If my child is walking down the hall, or a grandchild of mine was walking down the hall, I want them to feel proud of their school, proud of everything. So, it's just important that we do what's best for the kids at Huss also. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Myers, welcome.
Thank you. I'm Pamela Myers. I live at 1590 Pine Creek Road in Gastonia, and I'm here to represent the Lucille Tatum Center and the Extension and Community Association. The Lucille Tatum Center was built in 1974. That's over forty years ago, and there have been no significant upgrades to that building in that time. Restrooms and entrances are not ADA compliant for wheelchair access, and in fact, someone with a walker would have difficulty getting into any of the restrooms, either the men's or the women's, in that building. The carpeting is old and torn. The building is busy. There's activities going on all the time, everywhere from 4-H camps during the summer to a support of the senior community with people who are in their 60s, 70s, 90s, who may be physically challenged in moving around the building using canes and walkers. We'd like to see this facility brought up to ADA compliance, and thank you very much for your consideration of the upgrades to this important community center.
Ms. Myers, if I could real quick before you leave, just on behalf of the board, we very much appreciate what you do. We don't get to tell you that but about once a year, and we so much enjoy the dinner and the cakes each holiday season.
Well, you're very welcome. It's only one of the small things that happens at Lucille Tatum.
And we're happy that we could buy new curtains a couple of years ago.
Well, now we'd like new carpeting and a new parking lot.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
While Mr. Howell's coming up, if Jenny Stoltz and Ronnie Worley would like to step up next? Or not?
Good evening, Chairman Keger, Commissioners. My name is Chris Howell. I'm the Gaston County School Board, South Point Township Representative. I reside at 205 Commodore Court in Belmont, North Carolina. Considering the comment you made earlier concerning the recommendations, I really have nothing to say, other than the fact that I was taught in Marine Corps that if you get five minutes and you give it away, you never get it back. So, if you'll turn to Romans, Chapter 2, just kidding. I want to begin by saying thank you for the opportunity to speak. I want to say thank you especially to Commissioner Fraley in Cherryville, also Commissioner Price in Belmont, and to yourself for not only seeing the proposal that we submitted but also recommending it. And so, I want to take just a brief moment to talk about what those three are and why they're important to Gaston County schools, because the community may not know that. The first one is in Cherryville, and it deals with the high school basketball gym floor. We believe as a system that this is an area where students and community learn about life, and they do that by rubbing elbows across the generation span, by one reaching up and one reaching back. And this facility and making the improvements in it is going to allow that to be a better place for that to be done. The second one, several people have already spoke about tonight, and that's the Hunter High School track resurfacing and the fence around the football field. I spent many years and learned over the years as a participant in athletics, as a parent of an athlete, and then as a fan of the sports, that athletics gives hope to all students, regardless of who they are and the fact that they may not have it in other areas. And so, I appreciate the board taking that into consideration, the recommendation, and what I hope to be the approval at the end of this. The third thing is South Point High School's auditorium. I appreciate Commissioner Price seeing that as being important. What we're doing is improving the light and sound, because we believe in Gaston County schools that we have an obligation to a well-rounded student. We believe that there is a need for athletics, and if you look at South Point, the athletes there are tremendous, the trophies are stacking up. We also believe that there is a need for academics. And if you look at our schools and you look at South Point, the academics are increasing, the scholarships are coming at a higher rate in Gaston County than they ever had before. But we also believe that there has to be a well-rounded student in the arts, and we believe that this facility and the upgrades on it will allow the community and the school to do just that as they look to do their performances, their pageants, and other things. So, it was my prayerful consideration or my hope that your prayerful consideration of these grants would be supported. But you already said that you're going to do that, and so, in doing that, I believe that you're showing solidarity not only in standing with our students, their families, but also our community. You guys do an awesome job, and I just appreciate your time and effort in all of this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Stoltz, good evening.
Chairman Keger and Honored Commissioners, I'm Jenny Stoltz. I live at 2985 Heritage Commons Lane in Gastonia. I'm a proud member of the Board of Directors of the Dream Center. I work for the Mayor of Bethlehem over here. And I only wanted to make a comment to say that we are so grateful, so grateful, for the investment you have made in the Dream Center. We will promise to you and assure you that you will have great rewards from that investment, that you will see great returns and great outcomes, and you will see young people in the next few years who will be job-ready, who otherwise would have still been in the poverty level of our community. Thank you for your investment. God bless you.
Thank you, ma'am. And good evening, Mayor Worley. While he's coming up, next would be Allen Kloniger and Pastor Spargo and Wavy Williams. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, on behalf of Town of Cramerton, our Board of Commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. Of course, we're here on the township grant for the Cramerton Kramer Mountain Sidewalk Project. This is a project that will connect from Baltimore Drive on Kramer Mountain Road to New Hope Road that intersects there where the Cramerton Middle School is. There's many children. We spoke about all the needs for our schools. This is also a need for our school. We have many children that travel this section of road each and every day. There's a shoulder there. This sidewalk will provide them a safe route to and from school. It will also link Wilkerson Boulevard to Kramer Mountain Road via sidewalk, so if someone could come off of Wilkerson Boulevard at Market Street in Cramerton, go all through town on a sidewalk, and end up at Cramerton Middle School. So, it's a worthy project. There were certainly many needs throughout Gaston County, and we understand the need to work with the money and spread it as best you can. We just appreciate the opportunity. This is, of course, we've received congestion mitigation funds through NC DOT, and we had requested that through the GCL MPO. So, this is a project that NC DOT, Town of Cramerton, and now Gaston County is working on to complete together. It'll make our schoolchildren safer. Appreciate Commissioner Price and you sponsoring this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'm Allen Kloniger, live at 507 West Wilken Street in Dallas, North Carolina. On February 14th, I got ran over by a drunk driver. I mean, January 14th. Got a concussion, too. Ask my staff. But what I want to tell you, the Commissioners, and you, a lot of elected officials here, but most importantly, the people, most times I'm on the other side. I'm the one helping. You should be so proud of the men and women that come out in emergencies. I got to experience that. I was knocked out. Next thing I know, someone's taken my towel. I went out again. Next thing I know, I have firemen in there. Next thing I know, I have GM's personnel in there. I received the greatest treatment from men and women who don't get paid enough, who don't get appreciated enough for what they do. And I want you to know, and all of you to know, that you should say a prayer for them every day, that you should appreciate the sacrifice they give and do. Because I thought I was going to die at one point, because I couldn't wake up. I mean, it didn't help. Kim's got me going, "Wake up, Sheriff, wake up." Glad I didn't have a broken neck, or y'all have a new sheriff. But I'm here to say to the Gaston Fire Department, thank you. To GMs, thank you. And thank you, Clyde, for going with my wife to the hospital. I do remember your face, and I just remembered who you are just right now. Thank you to the Crowder's Mountain Volunteer Fire Department for responding. Thank you to my staff and the sheriff's deputies that came, to the Gaston City Police Department, to the chief of Mount Holly and the chief of Bessemer City that came to the hospital, and to all the people that put on Facebook, I got two minutes to go, being concerned about me. It humbled me. And I was going to call everybody back to call me, but I dropped my phone in the toilet the next morning, so I had to get a new one. Sorry, Allen. I know you called, but I never got to call you back. Gaston County has the kindest people. We should be proud, and we should stand together. We should never put down our emergency services people. We should never look for fault in what they do. We should look to support them. I know I supported them my whole life, but at 58, I thought I saw my life go. And a young lady in the back of the GM's truck looked at me and said, "You better stay awake. We need you." So, I'm here not asking for no money. I thought of a bunch of good projects sitting by there. But I'm asking you as citizens to remember your emergency services personnel, and I want each and every one of you know they're great, they do a wonderful job, and I'm standing here because of it. Thank you.
Allen, when you gave your name and address, you said 507?
West Wilken Street, Dallas.
I know, but you might go back to the doctor, because you wrote down 509.
It is 509. I promised you, we gotta do this. We're gonna do this for three weeks. A week, just getting little things mixed up. But don't worry, I'll be sharp.
Take two aspirin. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening. My name is Dickie Spargo. I reside at 832 Avondale Road in Gastonia. Commissioner Keger and other Commissioners, thank you so much for what you do. Proverbs 31, verse 8 and 9 says, "Speak up for those who cannot speak for themselves; for the rights of all who are destitute, speak up and judge fairly; defend the rights of the poor and the needy." And we do have many in our community that are in need. Almost 20% of our population is under the poverty line. Nearly 21% are eligible for food stamps and Medicaid, and overall, almost 74% of those in poverty are members of minority groups. Thousands of students in Gaston County are born every year into poverty, and they dream of what life would be like to be successful. Many of them never imagined that they could own their own business, or go to college, or be successful in life, or even break the cycle of generational poverty. And so, our dream with the Dream Center Academy is to give students an opportunity to reach their God-given potential and break the cycle of dependency and raise up future leaders in Gaston County. And the Dream Center Academy is a unique academy designed to help students in middle school all the way through college, to help them continue their higher education and to get out of poverty and become leaders in our community. And I want to thank you for the support of our academy. I want to promise you that your investment that you're making will be one that you can prove to be very proud of. And I'll leave you with a quote from Frederick Douglass, the great abolitionist and statesman, who once said, "It's easier to build strong children. It's easier to build strong children than to repair broken men." I would like to ask if our executive director, Wavy Williams, may have a moment just to share a little bit as well. Wavy?
He can have a bunch of moments. Okay. Excuse me. Wavy Williams, I live at 1445 Kings Court here in Gastonia, and I'm a retired school teacher who worked in the Title I schools, Rhine, Woodhill, Lingerfelt, Tryon, High Shoals, and Pleasant Ridge. And I had an opportunity during those times of a physical education teacher to mentor many, many kids, kids who did not have fathers, kids who did not have hope. I've seen some go to jail. I've seen some graduate and do great things. And not too long ago, we had an apartment ministry over in the Highland Hills Beaver Book now area, and I took a young boy who was 10 years old at the time, who just happened to have my last name, and he called me dad. And from the age of 10 until he graduated, which was this past year, I literally walked with him through the process of going from elementary school to middle school, now graduating, and then he's at North Carolina Central today. And so, I can see what we can do with the Dream Center if we take one family and one child at a time and walk that child out of poverty, walk that child into what we call hope and opportunity. So, I want to thank each and every one of you for the hope and opportunity that you're going to give to children through the Dream Center Academy. God bless you all.
Thank you, sir. If Robin Connor, then Karen Bernard, would please step up if you care to. And they will be the last names on the list I'm giving. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. My name's Karen Bernard. I live at 221 Claudette Drive in Gastonia. We, the members of Lucille Tatum Center, would like to thank you, Commissioner Williams, and the remainder of the Commissioners, and encourage you to grant the application to improve our county building, which was, as we mentioned earlier, built a very long time ago. It's very important for our county buildings to be brought up to date with the American Disabilities Act standards. We hold several classes for the public, both mature adults and children, which this will affect. The improvements that will be done with this grant include making our parking lot safer, bringing our bathrooms up to code for the disabled adults and children, and upgrading our kitchen to help with our classes, again, for the disability. All of these improvements will help to bring our building up to the federal ADA requirements. Again, we thank you for your time and the upgrades to your county building. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. That concludes the citizen recognition portion of our agenda. At this time... Commissioner Keger.
Commissioner Keger.
Yes, sir.
I think Mr. Loftus had tried to sign up, but it went ahead, and she had picked him up. I was wondering if you'll allow that. And anyone else who didn't get to sign up?
Thank you. I'm Donnie Loftus. I live at eighteen forty-nine Gaston Day School Road. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and commissioners. I want to commend you tonight for reaching out and touching a lot of folks in our county. The awards of these grants will impact most every community we live in, with fourteen mayors, fourteen city councils, and lots of people. So it's vitally important that, as commissioners, we reach out to those people, that you do a great job of doing that. As a presently sitting hospital board member with Caramont Health, I want to say thank you for working through the lease negotiations. That's been a process for over many months that finally came to fruition, and that was signed. And I'm very pleased with our community that not only this board of commissioners, but also Caramont Health, plays an important part of addressing the health needs of our citizens, raising awareness of living in a healthy community. So I just wanted to say thank you for touching so many different people with so many different projects throughout our whole community. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else that did not sign up? All right. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Do I hear a...
So moved.
Okay. Mr. Philbeck makes the motion. Mr. Brown makes the second to adopt the consent agenda, which is items A through Z, followed by double A through A and E. Any discussion? Mr. Price?
Yes. On page, item, well, it's on page seven on the green sheets, item A, E. Is the thirty thousand coming out of fund balance, or is it coming out of DHS budget? I mean, we put access under DHSS, so just clarification on my part, is it coming out of general fund, or is it coming out of DHSS?
Commissioner Price, it is coming out of fund balance. This was unanticipated because of a rather dramatic increase in the requirements for transporting vets, mainly because of new facilities that have become available. While it certainly enables better services to our veterans, it does come at a cost, and we anticipate this cost increase will continue into the next fiscal year.
Thank you for that. Clarification.
Any other discussion on the consent agenda? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. The zoning matters from the public hearing, do we have a decision on both of them? Okay. On the item A, zoning text amendment, ZTA sixteen oh one, the applicant Gaston County Planning Board to consider the proposed text amendment to the UDO in all the chapters and section that are listed in the paragraph in the print, how does the planning board recommend?
Mr. Chairman, the planning board recommends approval of that proposal on a unanimous vote.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Philbeck, second by Mr. Carpenter. Discussion. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Mr. Williams, thank you. He didn't stick around. Item B, Commissioner Price, zoning map change Z one five dash ten, Flat Creek LLC, to rezone the property parcels listed in the text. How does the planning board recommend?
Mr. Chairman, the recommendation from the planning board is to approve that application, and that's also on unanimous vote.
Thank you, sir. Entertain a motion to approve. Mr. Carpenter, Mr. Brown made the second. Discussion. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Okay. We now reach the non-consent agenda items. We have, during the revision, we separated item A from B through G, and item A, sponsored by myself, of course, to amend the resolution to revise township grants to three million as opposed to three point five. And I'll be very brief, and I'm not going to get into anything about it. I know how this is going to go. And Mr. Price, I think, sort of agreed with me at our last meeting. We're all, we were all given a five hundred thousand dollar allotment of funds. Now, some commissioners have argued that it wasn't the commissioner, it was the township, and the five hundred thousand...
Hold on. Mr. Chairman, is there a motion on the table for this? Wouldn't there have to be a motion, then a second, then discussion?
Okay, you're right. Is there a motion?
You make the motion.
Well, I read my name, but I'll make the motions there second. I mean, I'd be very quick and brief if somebody would give me a second. Otherwise, we're going to get into lengthy things. I'm not, I'm not going to be critical. I just want to make a point about five hundred thousand.
Point of order. If you make the motion, and there's a second, you can discuss it.
Is there a second?
If not, if there's not a second, you can discuss it under other items.
Is there a second? All right. Phil's for lack of a second. Item B through G is taken as one item. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Williams?
Second.
Mr. Price made the second, I think?
Yes, he did.
Any discussion?
Let me say something. I would like to thank all of the people that came out and spoke on behalf of these grants, these township grants. It indicates quite a bit of interest, and it also indicates a lot of needs. Mr. Gallagher said that we chose them based on good ones and bad ones, but I didn't see any bad ones. We have a lot of good needs in this county, and we have this money as a result of some good work, working with the hospital on a long-term lease that we had been given, and they were able to do that because they, you might not know it, but they have taken property off the tax rolls, which are put in to exempt from property tax. Some of their operations are tax exempt. So we have this, and it's a one-time deal. We chose to do some things that is going to help economic development, education, and quality of life in this county, and thank each one of you for participating in that. It's going to pay great dividends, and I thank you for bringing those forward. Thank you.
Yes. Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I'll echo what Commissioner Carpenter said. You know, this is money, one-time money that we received from the hospital lease, and I think it's very important to use it for one-time purposes. I don't think it's smart to use one-time money for recurring expenses. I believe we should use it for what we've talked about. We've already got a list of things that we think we should invest in, and these are some other items that I think we talked about. Also, as Commissioner Carpenter said, it's very exciting to see this many people at our meeting talking about something. I think these guys could attest, normally when we see the room this full, it's because people are ticked off at us for some reason. So it's refreshing to see, really, a unified effort. We heard a lot of positive things from the microphone tonight. We had everybody get up and talk about some of the great things that we're doing with the grant. I'll even say, you know, when the young man, Mr. Sharp, was speaking, my wife even sent me a text message. She went to us, and she sent me a Husky Pride text message. So I don't know if that was a sign or not that where we're going tonight, but I will say the other thing that excited me was the fact that nobody was here really for self-interest. If you heard everybody get up there, you heard them talk about things like water sewer projects for underprivileged people, parks for underserved citizens, sidewalks for public use, renovations for our veterans to use at the American Legion in Cheriville. So I noticed that everybody was interested in helping other people, and the community as a whole, and the county as a whole. And here we have an opportunity to, really, and we heard tonight, where this is going to benefit everybody from the northwest part of Cheriville to the southeast part of Belmont, everybody from every age group, from the toddlers playing at the splash pad to the seniors or mature adults, as Ms. Bernard said, at the Lucille Tatum Center. So I think if you look at what we've heard, I'm excited. This is good. It's good to have this kind of unity. It's good to have this kind of synergy here in the room. So I appreciate everybody coming and speaking. I appreciate this board really embracing this idea, and I'm excited to not only vote on this, but to see these things happen in the near future. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Fraley?
I am, Mr. Chairman. You know, what a night, and I'm going to echo what Commissioner Williams just said. I've made this trip over here many nights, knowing that this place was going to be packed, it wasn't going to be a whole lot of fun. The things we were going to be talking about and the decisions we were going to be making were going to be tough, and they weren't a lot of fun. But tonight's different, and, you know, this is just better.
Development Corporation, if you look at the Gaston Regional Chamber, if you look at Mont Cross Chamber, the Mount Holly Chambers, all of them basically have the same vision, and they are to promote economic growth, improve educational outcomes, and build infrastructure to accommodate growth. When you look at the plans that we put forward, extending water and sewer, the Dream Center, and other programs that will directly affect outcomes of children, when you look at what we just did with the UDO and was able to change that, that was one of the main things for the Greater Gaston Development Corporation. So I do think it is a good day to bring the community together. We don't need a pat on the back. Actually, this is really long overdue. We have fought for a good lease for the citizens of Gaston County for a long, long time. In all actuality, when we first, we should spend these dollars, especially the three point five back in the community. To me, it's simple. For years, you have subsidized the hospital with a dollar a year lease. That's what we got for a year for all of that land, a dollar a year. So when taxes had to be raised and government had to be funded, you couldn't look to a lease because we got a dollar a year. We had to tax the citizens of this county at certain times to pay for school bonds and things of that nature. So why wouldn't you, in good faith, when you get some of that monies back, return it back to the community? It's not...
I hit a couple of my fellow commissioners and got the support, and just grateful for them backing this.
You're not going to see big write-ups about it. It doesn't sell papers, but it's a good thing, and it's a good thing that it brought so many people in the community together. With that said, I do have to have Chuck, for the record, clarify. I serve currently as vice chair of the Dream Center, and seventy-five thousand of my monies will be, not my monies, your monies, will be going towards that endeavor because there are a lot of children from Dallas and Gastonia, basically that whole area that is affected by that. So I wanted to run that by the county attorney, want to make sure there was no conflict of interest, because I'm not receiving a dime. But before I vote, I want him to publicly state that for the record. Can you, do I have a conflict of interest in that and voting for that?
And those who are, you have no conflict there.
So if you read in the Gazette, I have a conflict of interest, you can say you've heard it here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And for the same reason, I served as chairman of the Gaston Farmers Market now for several years, but I wasn't a part of that. They did, they made their request, and the commissioners from Gaston approved that, so thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Mr. Fraley?
I went to Cheriville High School, and the GMS got me through. Am I okay?
You don't have to these days.
I think the statute of law...
Oh, that's a good one. That's a good one. That's a good one.
All right. Is that it?
Need to vote?
No, I'm going to have a little discussion for a minute or two. And I want to explain to the folks that are here why I've opposed this for my own reasons. Every one of these projects are worthy, believe me. I wish we could fund these and the other thirty or so we didn't get around to. But the reason I was opposed to it wasn't to do these good deeds, to help these great organizations and projects. It's that I just wanted to take the allotment in my township portion to return back to the fund balance. And the reason for that was that we're told we have well over a hundred million dollars in worthy projects for both economic development and in education that we've not touched. We have over a hundred million dollars of projects, and I just had a problem going out to solicit new problems, new projects, and new issues, but not take care of the ones that have been waiting. So that's all I'm going to say about it. I just, you know, I had a difference of an opinion of my fellow board members, and, you know, I'm happy that this is being done, but at the same time, I just wanted to explain my logic and reasoning, why I would not want to vote for it. And that's it. Told you I'd keep it simple. All right. All those in favor? All opposed? Mr. Fraley, we're on appointment, sir.
I have two. I have a reappointment, the Housing Appeal Advisory Board, Robert Pope, and I have a new application, Pamela Good, for Transportation Advisory Board.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Mr. Brown?
I have two, and I'll make them both at the same time. Family Advisory Board, Ms. Melanie Lorenz, and the Travel and Tourism Advisory Board, Ms. Pamela Good.
Second. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Mr. Price?
Thank you. I have four, it looks like. To the Gaston County Board of Adjustments, reappointment of Mr. Chuck Ballard. To the Housing Appeal Advisory Board, reappointment of Pamela Good. To the Fire Advisory Board, Mr. Earl Withers III. And to the SARAH Local Planning Committee, William Conrad Warren. But I need the board to also know that Mr. Conrad is currently not a Gaston County resident, but he is the fire representative due to his position now, so...
Now, I know there have been times where people have been kept from being appointed over my tenure on this board for not being a resident. Mr. Moore just informed me that we'd have to make that decision to make this, you know, a specific change. So we'd have to, I guess, vote on that, Mr. Moore?
Well, it's been disclosed that that resident does not meet your policy guidelines, so if the board's willing to accept that, your vote will indicate that this is an exception for this one case on your policy. It's a case-by-case decision if you're going to make an exception.
Is there a reason?
Well, he's the representative on SARAH Local Planning Committee, representing the fire. He's replacing Keith Watts, and he's the assistant chief. But he did apply, but when Donna sent me the application, there wasn't no citation on there that, and I believe it came from Patsy Haney over at Emergency Operations, but I just wanted the board to know it prior to approval, and I think it's because of the position that he is holding, that that position usually is that representative on the SARAH Local Planning Committee.
I wonder how he got on the SARAH.
Well, he's not on it yet.
Yeah.
So it's just... So it's just.
I would not feel comfortable opening that door. I think to serve on the boards, you should be a Gaston County resident. And I think we're gonna have some issues if we open that door. Unless I'm missing something that I need to know. And I think we're in agreement by everybody's head nodding, so maybe you can just retract that and we won't even have to get into it.
We'll just send the, Ms. Haney a note that we need a Gaston County resident. Okay?
Okay. I'll second the other three. Mr. Price, what was the second appointment? You said Ms. Good?
Yeah, Pamela Good, Housing Appeal Advisory Board.
Okay. All right. Any discussion further? All those in favor? Okay, thank you. Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got two. The Planning Board, Scott Adaway, and the Travel and Tourism Advisory Board, Alex Mullenach.
Second.
Any discussion, all those in favor? Thank you, Mr. Philbeck.
I have several. I'd like to make those in one motion. Mr. David Keen to the Council of Aging, Brian Bookout, Council of Aging, reappointment of Eric Hendricks to the Fire Advisory Board, and a reappointment of, I think it's Lyman Summerlin, to the Gaston County Board of Adjustments, a reappointment for Mike Delaney to the Planning Board.
Any discussion? Mr. Price, did you?
No.
Okay. All those in favor? Mr. Carpenter?
I have none, but I would like to call your attention to the one that the chair has an appointment on, and that's the TAC or MPO. Have you found anybody yet? It has to be one of the committees.
I thought you told me you were gonna do it.
No, I am. This is, this is the alternate.
Oh, the alternate?
Yeah.
Well, didn't we talk about that?
Well, there is, we had two on there, and it requires some sort of submittal that the legislature come up with a couple of years ago that required elected officials to list all of their holdings and everything, which I think is just ridiculous. We all sworn to the same auspices, they are, and I think we ought to request that our legislature remove that.
Well.
But I just wanna make a point. I filled mine out, but I don't know why they extended that down. And I've asked for the cost to this state, for all over this state, for people to pull up, fill out those cotton-picking forms, which wasn't fun. I did it to stay on as our rep on the MPO. And I know Ms. Fraley, and I believe Mr. Brown was on it at one time, they were gonna have to go through that, and they said, you know, I'm not gonna fool with it. So I think we need to make a request to the state that they remove that. It doesn't serve a bit of good.
I would recommend you get up with the manager and craft the recommendation or letter.
Well, Mr. Philbeck's agreed to.
Well, it doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be a commissioner. It's an elected person. We should've brought it up when we had all those elected folks there.
Should've brought it up then.
No, no, it's not. No, they, the cities make their own appointment. This is one from the county.
Right. I've got, I've got, I've got that appointment, but it is local elected official or staff, according to my paperwork.
I'll say we'll report Commissioner Price.
No, I don't think so.
Hot damn, I'll report it now. Report me.
Transportation Advisory Board, local elected official or staff, Gaston County Schools.
Well, the rule on the MPO is, our rules are that it has to be an elected official. We don't have.
You're saying the MPO. I'm talking, we're talking about the Transportation Advisory Board.
That's the same thing.
Same thing, Tom.
Yeah.
But I'm telling you what we have here.
Same thing, Tom.
Is this wrong?
Tom, the same thing.
Is this wrong? I clearly read elected official or staff member.
Well, I can tell you what the rules are with the MPO.
Well, let's get Ms. Buff to get that straightened out. Mr. Carpenter thinks it should be a commissioner, and we just need some clarification. I guess you and the attorney can work on that.
Same thing.
Post haste after this meeting. Why, Ms. Guthrie is here. I will ask you to take back, and Ms. Buff will notify your clerk, that we do need a member of the Gaston County School System for the Transportation Advisory Board. That would be very helpful if you might take that along with. Ms. Buff will also send a letter. And the Chamber of Commerce and the EDC, we need somebody from those two. Okay, Mr. Booker's back there, so he.
That TAC's different. That's one for access.
Yeah, that's a different TAC.
Okay, okay.
I was talking about.
Well, we still need the volunteers, the appointments.
Yeah.
All right. Mr. Carpenter did not have any?
No.
You talked more than anybody, and you didn't even have one.
Well, listen, that's been open for several months now, and if I don't go, we don't have a representative there.
I've got two. Joseph Davis Jr. to the Hospital Board and Mr. John Lowry to the Economic Development Commission. Mr. Price made the second. All those in favor?
Commissioner Keighore, discussion?
Yes, sir. Back up. I did, I give.
Okay, well, we'll say. I didn't even hear the appointment. What, who were the appointments?
Joe Davis Jr. to the hospital and John Lowry to the EDC.
Okay. Yeah, so a quick discussion. Now, we, I don't know that he submitted all the paperwork yet to the hospital. I don't know if you know, Donnie, but we do, we're on the cusp of our independent status, so we'll review that before he's formally seated. But I will, I will vote to approve pending that, so.
I meant to call you.
All right.
All those in favor? Thank you. We have one other appointment, if you would please, from the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, Patty Leinberger.
Second.
Mr. Brown made the second. All those in favor? All right. We're gonna go back to the original item three or four and had the audit.
Just some stuff we can get on?
Yeah, what's next?
Commissioner Wade presented me tonight with these two books, and we'd like to give those to Invest in Our Community. And this one here is especially, you probably wanna look out page 70, Ms. Guthrie, before you send that back. But you can take those and put those down to your center, since you love it, library stuff, so we're giving you those to take with you. Page seven. I have an autograph. I put the little front there for you.
At this time, we are gonna have the county audit presentation. We've put them off all night, and we should let them go. Ms. Erica Brown from Martin Starnes and Associates.
Good evening. Well, I'd like to start off by thanking you for allowing me to be here tonight. And I'm gonna present to you some summary information of the fiscal year 2015 audited financial statements.
And I will just let everyone know that we've been given this information and reviewed it.
And we, I brought copies of the reports for you as well, so you'll get those. We did issue an unmodified audit opinion, which in layman's terms is a clean opinion. I'd like to thank all the finance staff, Bryant, Tanya, and everybody for being cooperative with us. That makes my job much easier. The majority of this presentation, which I will be brief, is related to the General Fund and the Public Assistance Fund. And those two funds are combined together for reporting purposes. So the General Fund and Public Assistance Fund revenues were over budget by 2.3%, and the expenditures were under budget by 11%. There was a new accounting standard that was implemented this year, and that is GASB 68. That stands for the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, and they set the standards that we must follow. And this relates to the pension liability. This new standard affected all units in the state that participate in the state retirement plan. The state provided each governmental unit with their amounts to be recorded for their portion of the state plan, and these changes are affected on the financial statements. Now, this slide shows us the General Fund and Public Assistance Fund summary. It gives us revenues, expenditures, and transfers, final budget compared to actual. Combined revenues were over budget roughly $5.4 million, and combined expenditures were under budget by roughly $24.7 million. Fund balance, this is a terminology that you hear very often, as well as the term available fund balance. Available fund balance is defined by the local government commission and is calculated by taking your total fund balance, less non-spendable, which are items such as prepaid and inventory, less stabilization by state statute, and this is basically your receivables that are not available to be spent. And this gives you that, your available fund balance. This calculation is utilized as a basis for comparing you to other units and calculating your fund balance percentages. The county's total fund balance for 6/30/2015 was $86 million. If you take out non-spendable and stabilization by state statute, that gives you an available fund balance of $65 million. If you compare this to the prior year of $46 million, there was an increase of a little over $19 million, or 42%. And as discussed this evening, the majority of that was related to $20 million that was received from the hospital. Now, this slide is very difficult to see on the screen, but what it shows us is the county's available fund balance over the past five years, which is on the blue line. And then you have the state average for counties with populations in your category in the pink line. So Gaston County has an available fund balance of 33.69%, which is an increase of, over prior year, of over 13%. Again, this is due to that $20 million that was received from the hospital. As you know, Gaston County has adopted a minimum fund balance policy for the General Fund, which instructs management to conduct the business of the county in such a manner that available fund balance is in the range of 10% to 20%. Yours is 33.69%. In 2014, it was 20.10%. Yes.
Yes, hospital, I mean.
What is it there? Looking back to about 1.
Which is normal.
This slide shows us the top revenues for the General Fund and the Public Assistance Fund, the top three, which are property tax, restricted intergovernmental revenues, which are your federal and state grants, and taxes and licenses comprised of 82% of the total revenues for the General Fund. So property tax, this slide shows us your final budget 2015 and 2014, and this makes up 56% of the total revenues. The revenues exceeded budget by $2.9 million, or a little over 2%, and decreased from prior year 1.6%. The tax collection rate over prior year increased 0.83%, so that collection rate did go up. Restricted intergovernmental, which is 14% of the revenues, and again, this is your federal and state grants, budget exceeded revenues by $3.3 million, and the current year increased from the prior year roughly $2.1 million, or 6.7%. Other taxes and licenses, this shows us that the current year exceeded the prior year by 14%, or $3.9 million, and we exceeded budget almost $4.2 million, or 15%. So sales tax continues to improve, and revenues are across, are up across the state, so the economy is improving. Now, if we move on to expenditures, the top three expenditures are human services, public safety, and education, and they comprise of 82% of the total expenditures. Human services, which is 30% of total expenditures, budget exceeded actuals by $11.2 million, or 16%, and the current year increased from the prior year just about $163,000, or less than 1%. And public safety, which is 27% of total expenditures, budget exceeded actual by 12.4% in the current year, exceeded the prior year by 1.6%. And education, which is 25% of total expenditures, current year exceeded prior year by 3%, and the budget exceeded the actual by a little less than 1%.
Now, does that include bonds, and is that everything including for education?
These are just your education expenditures, is that right, Brent? So just your current expenditures does not include the bonds?
This isn't bonds, this isn't the Commissioner's School of Excellence, this isn't SROs, this isn't any of that stuff?
We'd be up over $60,000.
Well over $60,000. Do you know where we would?
We'd have to get Bryant to research that for us.
I just don't know, I mean, it doesn't look like an accurate number when you post something like that up there.
So this, this includes the schools and the college? Education captures the college funding as well? But this doesn't have debt? This just has the operating funds for the school and the college?
Well, Bryant, let me ask you this. Would the debt be included in the other 18%? It's gotta be included in something.
It's actually in the transfers, because we transfer money from the General Fund to a debt service fund, so that expenditure is in another position.
It's not part of these expenditures that are here, because that's in a transfer.
Our debt payments are not included in that wheel?
Correct.
Correct.
And he can explain to you in more detail with the financial statements where that shows up on here. This is really just that General Fund and just a snapshot of those expenditures, but debt is reported separately.
So debt, even like with vehicles? So what do we have vehicles for, whether they're county police or the sheriff's office? Is that in the debt, or is that public safety?
If you purchased it in the current year, it would, it'd be in the expenditure, but the, if you purchased it with cash, it would be in the current year expenditure. If it's debt, then it would be separate.
Right. The debt transfer I'm talking about, we actually have separate debt service funds for education and then non-education debt for this facility, those things. We handle the debt instruments for financing of vehicles in each department's operating, but it's in the financial statements as an expenditure, not in a transfer.
Okay, so to simplify for me, the public safety is that, the vehicles that we finance, is that included in public safety?
Yes.
In what we just saw?
Yes.
Okay, is there a reason, since we have education separate, is there a reason that wouldn't be included there? Could we include that, one more accurate number?
Yes, you can. The way the county has always set up its financing and to count for the debt service payments, we have that separate fund. So funds flow into there, and then we make payments out. We could, we could change that, that, kind of the 2020 rule. We've always done it that way and will continue. But if the board would like us to move out of a debt service fund, we could certainly do that. It's no problem.
If I show the numbers, would that help?
I think that's something we should look at, because when you, when you look at that number, it's not an accurate number that really shows all of our debt. And it would be nice to look at one area and it show all of our debt, and you could have a breakdown versus, this is your debt, but it's not really your debt, because you have debt over here in these other departments.
And if you look in the budget document, we actually do combine that for presentation purposes, so we combine it for budget purposes to give a truer reflection of the county's expenditures for education, both the college and the schools. The financial statements are really designed for your information, but also the rating agencies. And GASB and GAAP have tried to make those more uniform, so Moody's and S&amp;P can look at them from Gaston County here or another county in California.
Does it help us on our rating if that is under?
No, it wouldn't help.
Okay. Then it just, it would be more clear. I agree with Mr. Williams, because when you're looking at that, it's not a real number. When you're talking about debt, it doesn't, you, I would wanna be able, okay, this is your debt, and be able to look and see all that debt, versus this is your debt, oh, but you have some here.
Correct.
And here. I personally, unless you can tell me we shouldn't change that, is there a reason? I personally, unless you can tell me, we shouldn't change that, is there a reason? We should have that information regularly, I mean, you know, with these kind of reports, it should stipulate.
And that is, it is in here, it's just not in the presentation in that format.
Earl?
Just to be clear, what I think you would like to see, then aggregated with the overall school expenditures, would be the annual debt service.
Yes. Okay. Well, and even when you're doing a presentation for the public, it gives a clearer view of this is all your debt.
And beyond that, like Chris Philbeck said, when you're presenting this to the public, if somebody's watching at home and they see education expenses, that's really not all that we're investing in education. We're spending much more than that. So I think even, at least for the public benefit, it would be nice to have that. Now, whether or not that's reported, when we take it to Moody's or S&amp;P or whatever we do with it, you know, that's one thing, but I think for the sake of, you know, public consumption, it would be nice for everybody to see what we're doing, and then, you know, they can make a judgment on that. But thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's it.
Thank you.
So to be clear, on the education here, this is only current year expenditures. So the majority of our discussion was related to the general fund. I have this one slide that has your enterprise fund, the solid waste fund, and compared to prior year, revenues increased about 14 percent, or $1 million, and so that was a slight increase over the prior year. And if there's no discussion on that, I'd like to guide you when you get your audit reports. In the beginning of the audit report, it's a lengthy document, over 200 pages. The beginning, there's a management discussion and analysis, and this is a great area to look for a summary of what has happened in the current year. It will give you the total debt and give you a better picture of that, and we can always pull together some other numbers for you to help.
At the beginning, you mentioned we had a clean report.
Yes, a clean opinion.
What are the other categories that accounting firms use as far as reports? Unclean, clean, little clean?
Well, it is, let's go back to the beginning here. The term clean opinion is just in layman's terms, it's an unmodified opinion. So you could have a modified opinion or a qualified opinion, which you did not have, so you have an unmodified opinion. A lot of times, people see that and think, what, you know, what are you talking about? So I just wanted to clarify.
But what are, how else would you refer to someone's finances other than clean?
If it was not clean, what would you say?
Yeah. Would it be, I mean, what, do you have any other terms?
No, I don't.
Okay, just modified or qualified?
Correct.
And clean. All right, thank you. Wait, maybe some more questions?
Is there more questions?
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian, for coming out. At this time, we will go back to commissioner reports, and Mr. Fraley?
None tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Not this time, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Price?
Yes, thank you. Tended the Department of Health and Human Services meeting, wanted to bring the boards up to date on the health side of things. We had a 25 vacancies in employees, 12 percent rate, lapsed salary in the health side is On the social services side, we had 32 vacancies, that is a 7 percent vacancy rate, lapsed salary of $414,615, with a total lapsed salary in DHHS of 847,718. Also attended the Gaston Family Health Service meeting. The thing I'd like to bring to the board's attention on that, Gaston Family Health Service is what we call a qualified public health entity, and we were notified, or Mr. Spencer notified us, that the federal government has allotted a little over $5 billion more than it did in the previous year for public health entities to improve and expand their services in the community of need, and so we're not sure how much GFHS is going to get, but it will be, have to be a program to where we are meeting the needs of a community that is in need. So more to come on that, and that's all I have this time. I would like to, attended the senior total living night at the facility. That facility currently has 121 participants. They do have a waiting list to get in or to be accepted. State government will let us take in six per month, and they are currently working on the expansion of that facility, about 4,000 more feet that will house a memory loss unit. So more to come on that. If any of you would like a tour, please go by the facility. Used to be the old Circuit City building over where the Gazette is, and Kathy Kinzig is now the director. She'll be glad to give you a tour, and from what I understand, it's a great facility, and the participants are all smiles during the day. So that's it, thanks.
It is a great concept, and the facility has really taken off gigantically. Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Doing some great things at Caramont. I don't know if you've been by and seen the progress on the new emergency department, the entrance, it's going to be just beautiful, very nice, it should be finished in the next few months. Also a reminder for people, you know, when you have to go through the emergency department, also remember that there is the new facility in Mount Holly, you should be getting in and out, you know, a lot quicker if you want to use that facility. Last thing I want to bring up is we did elect new officers, and I want to recognize Mr. Loftus, who is the new vice chairman of our board. Mr. Chris Peak is actually the new chairman of the Caramont Board, so I've got some new leadership, and I wanted to recognize Mr. Loftus as our new vice chairman in attendance with us today. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Philbeck?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will be, my wife's grandmother passed away, I will be in Delaware the rest of the week, starting Thursday. I know we have a delegation meeting and a planning retreat, if you could just remind folks there, so they'll know I'm there and not skipping out on the meeting, other than that. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter.
I'll skip.
Okay.
I did.
Too late, too late.
Well, I did attend the EDC meeting, and you can read the report from that.
All right, and I'll also be very brief. Attended the EDC meeting with Mr. Carpenter. They too elected new officers, Mr. Fred Jackson, chairman, and Dick Cromish, vice chairman. And there were various reports and development location issues that came up. I got to a portion of the travel and tourism meeting along with Mr. Mathers and I think Mr. Moore, and I was able to meet Mr. Applegate, our new director. And there was one, I did ask a question or two during the meeting or made a statement, they, something, an issue came up where they were looking for statistics comparing Gaston County to counties that have similar demographics, things like that, and they were talking, how are we going to find out all this information? And I've sat down with Donnie Hicks a couple, three years ago, and we discussed those things because EDC has done that. And I think it's Davidson County, for example, they're very close, like we are to Charlotte, they are to Greensboro. They have a similar social community like we do, similar golf courses, you know, close in population, we're bigger, but we need to do something to get those two departments to interact a little more, because they're probably getting ready to go out and reinvent this wheel that EDC can help them with. So just something we need to do, and I guess Mr. Mathers will be, you know, trying to get them to blend together with the new director. Maybe things can be a little more amicable over there. As Ms. Guthrie mentioned, I represented the board in a greeting at the Martin Luther King outdoor ceremony that morning, it was, wind chill was 21 degrees, and I'll tell you what, it was raw. And also over at the Irwin Center later in the evening. Any report from the manager?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I had two other things I wanted to ask, since I wasn't going to be here. Can I have a?
We'll get to other matters here in a second.
Okay.
Mr. Manager?
I'll be extremely brief this evening, thank you. Spent a lot of time in the last month or so on township grants, and certainly with Mr. Applegate, our new director of travel and tourism, and just in response, I have received a great deal of positive feedback from all of the various tourist venues that we have in Gaston County, and from Mr. Hicks with the EDC as well, in terms of reinvigorating that relationship. Spending a good deal of time on the radio communications issues right now, and finally, we're starting full force into the budget season, and we'll be reporting out on some of those preliminary activities on Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to mention that I know that a lot of your folks that'll be receiving these township grants will be calling tomorrow asking where their check is, and we'll be trying to push those contracts out on those grants as quickly as we can, but obviously a lot of them, so it might not be as fast as everybody had hoped to get them.
As long as it's done by Friday.
Can we, can we get an estimation of time when the payoffs will be completed by? I mean, days, weeks, a month?
Well, it varies, because the, I suspect that some of the larger projects that are utility projects for municipalities will take a period of time, and typically on those type of capital grants, we have reimbursed as the project goes along, so it may be, you know, a year or 18 months on those. Some will be really grants where we afford the money and request reports to the board, some we might ask them to break the payments down over a period of time, so that we can see the progress that's being made. They'll vary, and we'll try to work with all those people to get those right.
To follow up on that, do we have a, do we need to construct some type of very easy, brief process that if these, you know, if some of these grant recipients somehow go south, well, do we need to put some kind of process in position just so we can guard our money?
I think that's what Chuck is talking about.
It'll be in the contract, right, Chuck?
Yeah. Unless it's a straight-out grant, if it's like towards a sewer line, once there's a certain portion, or there's a match, then you would give it, you wouldn't give it, then it'd be spent on something else, there'll be stipulations if I'm correct.
But the other grants that aren't government-related, they're going to be paid as soon as we can get it to them?
They should be.
Okay, how do we follow up that they're using the money accordingly as stated in their requests?
That would be, I'm assuming that Chuck, that would be the stipulation of when they get the money, if it's not used, they'd have to pay it back, things of that nature.
Right, we'll ask for, some of them will ask for periodic reporting to the board, some of them, you know, they'll, some of them are fairly small, and I don't know that we would ask for too much, but we'll do a grant contract to require that the funds be expended for the purposes which they're granted.
All right, does that conclude your report? Mr. Philbeck, other matters?
Yes, we're going to have a, we're going to be meeting with the legislative delegation. I am not going to be here. I would ask that you talk about these two things, and if you could, if you could discuss these two issues, at least in the retreat. One, I believe the citizens of Gaston County deserve to vote on a pennies for progress for Gaston County. And whether you agree with it or disagree with it, the citizens at least deserve a vote on that. And I would at least like that we ask our delegation to give us a, the permission to have a referendum to allow the citizens of Gaston County to vote on that. And again, it's whether you agree or disagree, I've had a lot of people ask about that. If you look at York, South Carolina, and what they were able to do with their roads, the citizens at least deserve a vote on that. So I think that's something this board should push. Second of all, from my understanding, you're looking at 30, 40 years, if there would ever even be a Parkway, and I doubt it's ever going to happen, here's what I'd like to do. I would like, and this is something you can discuss in your retreat, I think we all can agree that we do need a bridge across the Catawba.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
When you look at the need, the development, and things of that nature, I would like this board to take $500,000 of the lease proceeds, put it to a public-private partnership with the community to advocate, whether it's a study or whatever that needs to be done, to look at a bridge across the Catawba River. And I just think, and here's the precedent for that, if you look at the P&amp;N line, we put, if I'm correct, $500,000 towards the P&amp;N line, and the state came in and put, I think it was seven or eight, five million?
And they ended up close to seven.
Yeah, close to $7 million. And we were able to push that, show them that we were interested, and get the community involved. And again, I'm not talking about the Parkway at all. What I'm talking about is a bridge that would help relieve traffic. Also, I've talked to some folks today with Homeland Security, we do have a security issue if we had a major threat, because you don't have another access. So I, you can talk about that, that is something I'm going to advocate, I don't hear anybody, you know, pushing at least those two ideas, and I think that's the way the commission can say, hey, this is something that we deem is important, we're willing to put some money towards it, instead of just talk about it. And I do think our delegation would be receptive to that. That's just my opinion, and again, I'm not going to be there, I'm going to call the delegation myself and talk to them about those ideas, but by resolution, I plan on bringing those to the board when I come back. I just wanted to bring that up, since I'm not going to be here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brown?
Just a topic to Mr. Philbeck's point, they should better use the study that they had for that portion, to go ahead, rather than taking the money for a study, let's go ahead and put it to bricks and mortar and concrete, I mean, we're going to do something. I'm just saying, they already have the study, so.
And you may be able to, what I'm trying to do is this, we've, I think the community, vote after vote, have spoken the will of the community when it comes to the Parkway. I think most people can agree that we at least need a bridge for that area, for safety, transportation, economic development, and I think if we just, instead of just talking about it, put some money up, form a committee of all parties, I just think it may be a way to get the ball rolling. If we could use those plans, great, but from what I hear, the way DOT works, you'd probably almost have to do it over again. I really don't know.
They can use the study.
We don't, you know, that will definitely be discussed, I can assure you of that, and you know, we don't know how much, or if we're going to contribute, but it needs to get done. And I think it'd be incumbent, once our, upon our delegation, to sit down with the Mecklenburg delegation, because they want it as bad as we do over there, and there are some, there are some deep pockets over there that are getting more and more involved in wanting that access, so that will be discussed, and we'll.
Well, I just, the status on that river crossing is one of the last thing I did as chairman of the MPO, was request the state to look at that, and they have the two river crossings plugged in for consideration in the next round, and that, there's going to be a few public hearings on the prioritization. It will compete with other projects across the state, so that river crossing is still The two river crossings would take over 12,000 cars off, coming up New Oak Union and South Point, and all of them to go across the road every morning and every evening. And if it was in place, you can see what it would do to help out with that jam up over. And if it was in place, you can see what it would do to help out with that jam up over there. So, it is in line for approval, but it's gotta compete against all the other projects across the state.
And you've shared all that with me. Hard copies too.
Yeah.
In my folder. Yes, sir.
Briefly a while ago, we were discussing with the audit, was fund ballots, were the fund ballots, is it going to be discussed at the retreat this week? Okay, I just want to make sure that we could get into more detailed discussion when it was brought up. Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Very quickly, I just want to thank Chuck and Earl, Dawn, and whoever else did all this work on these grants, the community township grants, because you guys did a great job. You made it where we could all deal with it, understand it, and put it together real quick. I know there's a ton of work went into that. I don't know who all, other than you three, but I want to thank whoever did it, and I appreciate the effort, thank you.
That it? All right, this concludes our meeting for tonight. Our next work session is February 9th, 6 o'clock here in the Harley B. Gaston Junior Public Forum Courthouse. The regular meeting of the 23rd will be followed, will follow immediately after the work session on the night. We thank you for watching. If you have any questions or comments, please telephone or call our clerk to the board at 704-866-3196. Good evening, everyone.